Well, it's five after, let's get going. I'd like to call this meeting to order pursuant Master General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording being made of the meetings. First is public comment. Are we skating or are we not skating?
We are not skating.
It's a fish pond.
It's official that we are going to close the skating. The weather just is not cooperating, so picking a date now has two overtake.
Okay.
So, and then we'll, we'll be meeting pretty soon to decide what we want to do for next year. How we're gonna set it up and, you know, all that good stuff. So for tonight, just two things besides the skating, well skating, is the elections, the primaries. So, we do have voting, early voting this week. So, Saturday, there was time to vote, and yes, and today was, it's today, maybe, yeah, today that was voting. So tomorrow, Tuesday, the 27th, the polls will be open 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Wednesday, the 28th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And Thursday, the 29th, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And Friday, March 1st, from 9:30 AM to 12:00 PM. The voting takes place here at the Town Hall at the former courtroom. And then on Election Day, March 5th, at Crossway, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And the only other thing that I have to report is the draft of the Open Space Recreation Plan is on the website now, the Town website, for people's review and comments, so please make sure you look through that, and if you see things that need to be added or corrected for any reason, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Approval of minutes? From 2:12.
I have nothing wrong with the minutes. I mean, somebody else has something, but I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Go move, sir, a second. Second by Conrad. Any further discussion? Peter, anything on it?
Nothing, thank you.
Yes. Do a roll call vote on it. Conrad?
Yes.
Dave?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Donovan, hi. Okay. 6:15, we have that. Anything for the Master Plan Committee, other than you keep getting COVID from hanging out there?
I'm not sure where I'm getting it from, but I, this is my rebound case now I'm in the middle of. I had it two weeks ago when I said I had a cold on Monday night. I actually was coming down with COVID, and now I'm on the backside of episode number two. Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit going on. We have a, the committee has received as of last Thursday, an email draft of virtually the complete plan. There's about 50 pages of background text and introductory stuff, and about another 20 or 30 pages of recommendations, specific actions. And the committee is reviewing that, and we will be meeting Thursday night. I hope to approve it for public hearing on March 30th. We will also be discussing the details of how to advertise for the meeting, how to get flyers out. The meeting will be at 1 o'clock on Saturday, March 30th, at the high school. And we'll be printing up some copies. The plan itself is in color and has a lot of colored line graphs and charts and things. And unfortunately, the price of color printing is high. So I made the decision in consultation with Brooke that we would make available for public hearing only black and white copies. And, but the, the color copy will be available on the website as soon as the committee approves it. And I'm quite proud of it. I think there's undoubtedly a lot still wrong with it, but I feel like it's quite comprehensive. It's optimistic, and yet I think it recognizes some existing problems that we have in town. And I'm hoping that the reception is positive.
That sounds great. But yeah, I'm gonna miss the 30th, I'll be out of town, but good luck with it. I, I hope they don't try to rewrite it on you that day.
Well, probably a little of that is inevitable, but send us written comments, Buck, if you want. I mean, you should have at least two weeks to read it before the 30th. I don't know when you're going out of town, but we're gonna, I'm gonna insist that it be up at least two weeks ahead of time, and if earlier if possible. Depends on how much they want to change, the committee wants to change on a Thursday night.
Okay, that sounds great. We got a few more minutes. I think Community Preservation Act is not here. Do we have? Yes. We want to just quick look at the last page of your packet is Oh, Peter. I'm gonna refuse myself out of this. Conrad, a few minutes, just look over to you, please.
Sounds good. Okay, the last time we were up, we discussed the chart they were prepared to add a little more care, and what the changes are gonna be for the next round. You might go over that quickly?
Yeah, I'll go over it again. I think I was a little bit fuzzy last time, and I'm probably just as fuzzy tonight. Let's see if I do better. So what happened, historically, we got ourselves in a bit of a tangle. We started off with a proposed bylaw that was going to apply only to detached accessory dwelling units. And then we got some information from various sources that what our assumptions had been that two-family housing, that the zoning on two-family residences was sufficient to cover the case of an in-building ADU. In other words, like a mother, I think of it like a mother-in-law apartment or an upstairs apartment. But it turned out we had overlooked that there are special requirements for two-family housing that are a little more rigorous than one-family housing. A little bit more setback or yard size or something. So we couldn't rely entirely on the two-family exemption, and we amended the bylaw. I think you'll all remember this, if you, if you strain your brain a little bit. We amended the bylaw proposal so that it covered both detached and attached ADUs. And in doing that, I think we didn't really go through it with a fine-tooth comb again, because there was a provision in it that said no ADU can be used for short-term rental. And when we wrote that sentence, we were thinking a detached ADU. But the effect of it now is that if I have a two-story house and a mother-in-law apartment up in the upstairs back, I cannot, if I get, if I get approval for it by special permit as an ADU, it's an attached ADU, and I cannot rent it as a short-term rental. And that is making it harder rather than easier to have an attached ADU. So it was an inadvertent restriction that I think we sort of fell into. It came up at town meeting when we were discussing it and open on the floor. And Jim Harding made an amendment which he drafted right there on the spot. And his problem was, as I recall, was that he wanted to make sure that, to the extent that we're building ADUs in town, that they actually get used for permanent housing, which I, I pretty much completely agree with that, that principle. I didn't vote for the amendment that he had, but I am in sympathy with the desire to keep ADUs from turning into short-term rentals. So we had the problem about the attached ADU. And then there's the problem that Jim brought up at town meeting about, well, what if somebody builds a detached ADU in their backyard, and they move into the ADU and rent out the main house? And it turns out that we had not prohibited that, because we only prohibited short-term rental of the ADU, not the switch and rent scenario. So what the proposal does before you, if you're interested in advancing it, is it would fix both of those problems. It would, for the ADU, the mother-in-law apartment example, where it's part of the building, you cannot now rent the ADU as an STR. But under this amendment, you would be allowed to do that. So an ADU in a building, an attached ADU, would have, as far as I can figure, all of the rights of a two-family dwelling. And conversely, as to the separate building, the bottom row in that table that I gave you shows that STR rental of the main house, once you have built a separate ADU in your backyard, STR rental of the main house would not be allowed. And that, I think, addresses Jim Harding's point. So I'll be, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
I think the table pretty much explains it. I think, I, I think that's here in the audience. Did you get a chance to see this at all? I haven't seen that. I just wanted to know, from an administration standpoint, if the CEO, by looking at this table, if he would feel comfortable with the interpretation that we're trying to promote here. I think it's clear what you're trying to do with the language.
Conrad, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think the, the question for tonight is whether the board is sufficiently interested in this to warn it for a public hearing. That would be the next step. If you think you might, might want to do this, then I would make a motion to present it at a public hearing at some time sufficient so that we could get it voted and a report written and submitted for town meeting in the spring. So that would be, I hope, sometime in late March or early April.
Motion's been made, anyone want a second? I'll second. I will call. Dan? Dave?
Hi.
Ben, are you on board?
Yes. I was.
You understand what we're doing here?
Well, I haven't really read it clearly, to be honest with you, Conrad. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So I'd like to read it more, but I'm not really for it or against it at this point in time.
I think the motion's being made to present it for a public hearing at a date in advance of the next town, town meeting. So it's, we're voting on whether to set up a public hearing. You're okay with that? I believe the rest of us are okay with it?
Yeah.
I see, that's all we're doing, is okay. And we're trying to thin it up, Ben, that's all.
Did you hear my presentation, Peg?
I did, Peter. I guess I didn't read it correctly from the beginning, so I'm just not familiar with, would that encourage, Peter, how many apartments or how many units would be on one piece of property?
Well, right now, if you can have, I guess, three things. You could have four things. You could have a one-family house.
Right.
And a two-family house.
Right.
You can have a one-family house with an attached ADU, and you can have a one-family house with a detached ADU.
So you could have three?
Two. Two.
Oh, you're talking about two entities on the same?
Two dwellings.
On the same property?
In four different ways of considering them legally, yeah.
Right.
Up to two, one or two.
Well, if we had a public hearing, that would mean we could ask some more questions at the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, I'm not, I'm in favor of that, then.
Okay, and I, I vote yes, Mr. Chairman, and I, I don't, haven't picked a date. I don't know, maybe we should, before we conclude this, we should pick a date? Is the first meeting in April, is that sufficient time for town meeting?
Yeah. Yes, well, it's pretty close.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to have a warrant by the end of April, so we'll be making, it just means we may, you know, we likely get it out sooner than the fair in the long term.
Well, let's make it the second in March, the second meeting in March, then.
Probably better.
That's, that's my motion. That'll be my motion if everybody's agreeable to that informal amendment.
Want to restate the amendment? Peter?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Want to restate that amendment?
Okay, my, my proposal, my motion is to warn this proposal for public hearing at the second meeting in March.
All favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Thanks.
Hi.
And Chairman, hi. We'll set up for the second second week of work.
Second meeting in March.
Sorry?
The second meeting in March. That'll be the third week in March.
Jim, can I add one quick information with that? I'm right now. I have nothing to say. Yes. Yeah, just mention we have not, we can still proceed with this, I did check. We haven't gotten the approval from the last bylaws quite yet, so we don't know if those are approved, if we're gonna be amending. Understand, we could still do that, but if the approval changes, we might have to go back a third time, so.
Can I do one, you might expect that?
I would hope soon, but you never know. They give us deadlines, but they don't, they don't hold themselves to any, so. Okay. The ADU matter is closed, we are now on to our special permit hearing for 50 West Center Street. Do we have representatives for that? Okay.
So Keith Bell, I'm the prospective purchaser of the building. Here to reestablish a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Believe, yeah, we have the handout of what we're proposing would look like.
So you're, tonight, you're just re-establishing?
Yes, so we
Six-two?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not doing a site plan or any of that yet?
No, so, we gotta make sure that we're allowed to put it on this pizza in here. Or building plans and site plan is required.
Okay. See. Are we finding where you're re-establishing, or do you have a outline for us?
I don't have anything recalled, and they said that it used to be I guess, it was, that we would need to come here.
Okay.
We go to, like, use, or if that is a non-conforming building or non-conforming lot? Because the oddity is, in this big old zone, restaurant use is allowed, right?
Yeah, it's under 6.5, 199.65. Any non-conforming user structure which has been abandoned or not used for two years or more shall not be re-established except by special permit from the planning board. Otherwise, any future use of such premises shall conform to the provisions of this chapter.
So we were looking at, I believe, where this applies, is we're looking to
Re-establish it as a pickup window, specifically. So not, not the
Well, it's not, it's not fast food.
Yeah, it's pizza.
It's pizza.
Yeah.
I mean, we're as fast as we can be, but it's not fast food. So it'd be, yes, we want to make sure that we're allowed to put it on this pizza here, and then we want to see if we can reuse that pickup window.
Okay.
Again, it's not a, not a drive-through, fast-food window, it's a pickup window, think like, when you go to the bank, you pick up your money from the window, it's the same thing, just
So it's gonna be a walk-up, not a drive-up?
It's a drive-up.
It will be a drive-up?
Yeah, a drive-back. Not like an order all, sure, online, whatever, and then you come and you just hand it out to the window.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Could someone explain to me, maybe I missed it, and it's been said, but why is it non-conforming?
The drive-up window is not allowed, I believe, in DCBC?
There is a drive-up window now?
There is, yes.
This is Leaper Vos, right?
It is.
So when was there a drive-up window at Leaper Vos?
When it was Kentucky Fried Chicken. Before that, before Leaper Vos, Kentucky Fried Chicken.
We're not talking two years here, we're talking at least 10 or more, right?
It's over two years.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay. The window is there on the backside of the building, is that the story?
It is.
We argued that was never an intent to abandon the window, because it remains?
It's, yeah. I mean, there's
I mean, it's obvious.
The use of the window's not been, it's over two years. So it's gotta be re-put that. Any, any expertise from the audience? What do you got?
I have comments.
You know I gotta ask.
You're supposed to, it's a public hearing, you're supposed to
Public hearing, yes, sir.
Yeah, I would speak for the fact that, I would speak for this project, the way it stands right now. As long as they don't, as, as the advocate mentioned, it's not like McDonald's where you drive around the back and order your pizza, and then go up and pick it up. I mean, it's not where you're gonna call ahead of time. It's very similar, even though it's maybe distinct, but the if you're on Park Street, you call in a meal, you go to that, you can't drive it, you gotta get out of your car and pick it up. But it's still not a drive-through, it's a separate pickup window. And I would think that by re-establishing this, perhaps with a condition that you wouldn't be able to, like, add a speaker and, you know, that kind of thing there, and just, just so that, you know, because I know I do this at other restaurants, where you get it, they confirm with an email, and you go pick it up, and you don't even have to get out of your car. I see that as re-establishing the way Kentucky Fried Chicken did it. I don't think they have a buzzer and, and all that. I think they go order it ahead and then control it and get it. Maybe they had a buzzer, but I think that would be a different issue.
They, they had the full microphone.
I never had that. No, I never wanted. Well, you gotta have a microphone to say, hey, I'm here to become my pizza.
We have a buzzer outside, so we know when the car pulls up.
Gotcha, okay. Well, anyway, I would be for it, as long as they don't have like a microphone way back, you know, like ordering at like a McDonald's, a second window.
As long as you're gonna order around state.
Yeah, right, so you order, you're gonna go get it, I would think that that's pretty innocuous to the neighbors. I don't see how that could be harmful in that case. I know at McDonald's, I've heard complaints with the neighbors that live up above because of the speaker until 11 or 12 or whatever, in the summer. You know, this, I think, is gonna be a totally different kind of situation. So I would, I would hope that you would consider to allow it to be re-established. Thank you. Gordon Neily.
Just happy to see that the building will let the use be honored. Been sitting there way too long, waiting for something to happen.
Use is allowed, I write, that's the one. It's not fast food. Because you're building a product inside.
Everything's handmade.
So it's not prepackaged, that part is handled.
Yeah, and the drive-through is only mentioned as a
We could argue that the structure that had to drive through future doings is still there. Capital was never abandoned, the use might have been abandoned, but the structure the ones that were taken out. I'm checking out for that.
Any, any, Peg, do you have a comment on this?
Who'd you ask?
You.
Me?
You have any comment?
Oh. I think it's okay. I mean, it's, it's not I don't know, it's been vacant for quite a while, and I don't think there are any other neighbors here. Are there that protested or are not in favor of it? It seems to me like it might be a good, good thing for the area. It's my comment. Thank you.
Who's, does Bill own the next building?
I own the next building.
Isn't that after? Bill owns his building, right?
Well, actually, I didn't kept going, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Peter, are you, are you, are you all done, or do you have more to say?
No, I'm just cautious about it. I'd like to see the map, a little bit more detail about what's next door and how close it is, and with more care. I know that there are special provisions about drive-throughs that are restricted in some places, so I need to, I need to do some more thinking and studying before I form an opinion.
Okay, all, all our bylaw says in mentioning the drive-through is, a bank is allowed in DCBC without a drive-through. So it doesn't say a restaurant with a drive-through. It says no fast food, so we're kind of in the middle here.
So, we could, we could approve it if we conclude that pizza is not fast food? Is that what you're saying, you think?
Fast food. Because it's not, I mean, fast food would be pre, prepackaged, prepared like that.
Everything's custom-made here.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pizza place.
It's a pizza restaurant.
It is a chain, it's a nationwide, worldwide chain, but
Can you buy one slice at a time?
No.
No, the answer is? There's no, no little nuggets or anything like that, that you can nibble on in the parking lot after you drive through?
Everything we make has to go, with the exception of salads, okay? But people don't really come for us for salads. But with the exception of salads, everything has to go through the oven. So everything is made and then cooked, there's no, absolutely no fast food portion.
No, what I mean is, the portion sizes, are there individual portions that you sell?
I mean, small pizza would be the lowest portion.
Okay. So Buck, I, I guess, if we're trying to understand the spirit of the framers, whoever they were, they didn't want fast food in this district. But if you could, if you carry it home, I guess it's okay if you pick it up at the window. Is that, is that sort of what you think the bylaw says?
I, I don't even know what fast food, the classic definition. You get beyond McDonald's, Burger King, Taco Bell, that's, I don't know where you then, fast food.
I, I just, I'm just not sure that I think that a small pizza is fundamentally different from a Happy Meal. You know, they're, they're both something you could eat in the parking lot, I think. And I, I don't know why we originally prohibited drive-through fast food. I guess we thought it was more congenial to have people walk in or less, I don't know, I don't know, less, less unpleasant, perhaps.
Yeah.
We do have a fast food definition.
Okay.
And that is, a fast food restaurant is an establishment where a principal business is the sale of pre-prepared or rapidly-prepared food directly to the consumer, to the customer in a ready-to-consume state or consulting either within the building or off premises. I think the, the language here is the sale of pre-prepared or rapidly-prepared food. And if you deal with a pizza panza, I mean, everything that's bought, everything that's ordered separately, everything's built custom, it's not pre-prepared. So in the definition of the code, in fact, it's kind of, it's a code, perhaps a fast food restaurant, but there's no definition for restaurant. So, you know, it's kind of a balance here, where this
Yeah, I, I guess I, I appreciate your reading that, Conrad, but I, as you were reading it, I came to the opposite conclusion. I mean, if, if hamburger is prepared food If, if hamburger is prepared food, pre-prepared food, because. They took the frozen hamburger out of the freezer. They took the pickle out of the refrigerator. They took the bun out of their refrigerator. They slapped them all together and they put a wrapper on it. And handed it to you through the window. That would be pre-prepared food, right? A lot of times the fast food prepares the product. And they, they put it in a, in the tray until they're done during a peak lunch period. They got this, the hell is that already pre-prepared? You order, I went to hamburgers and I'm, you know, towards the fries. A lot of times that stuff is already pre-prepared, ready to be picked up to go through a window. Which is not, I believe that's not what this is. So you're saying if it's, if it's cooked to order, then it's not pre-prepared? Is that what you're saying? Like, if somebody calls in for a pizza or online, however they want to do it.
Yeah, it would probably be more accurate, but even McDonald's doesn't do that anymore. They, they don't have the big rack of burgers like they did back when they tried law trip. How you go in, oh, there's, there's. And I mean, what's different? That definition, you could take any US food, go to every restaurant. And you buy the, the free, the prepared stuff from US foods and they make it. So that, I mean, it's so outdated. Here we are again.
So I use, I went to a few plant boards for this. Yeah, I have a couple of stores with a drive through and the, the issue usually is on the queue line and. That's where most towns have the issue is like they don't want a queue of cars in there. And that's where we usually got approved. We don't have a, we don't have a queue and that, that is what the fast food has, right? You order and then you drive the line. There's seven, eight cars in the queue and, and that causes lights on the neighbors and all this stuff. We, we are, yeah, back on the main road. We are. You come and pick it up and you go, right? Like there's, there's no queue. Maybe two cars, you know, if it's Friday night or something, but it's, it's not the same.
But I'm just curious. It sounds like tonight was a special permit.
Yeah.
To discuss the reestablishment of a previously nonconforming use.
That's all, yes.
After this, assuming you voted for it, it has to go through a site plan approval, correct?
Right.
We don't have any site plans.
No, no, it's no site plan. Yeah.
In fact, Peter's saying, I mean, there's no site plan to look at.
I believe it'd still be a special permit because it'll be a, um, pre-existing.
Isn't, isn't a site plan automatically required for every special permit?
Yes, it is. Yeah. So this, he, he's probably going to have two special permits. The, the first one is. Reestablishing the use and then. Reusing that use in. In the area. Right?
At least a month.
That sound great to me, Gordon?
Cannot.
May I comment?
Go ahead. I, I'm always looking for a little.
That's not, no, Gordon Bailey, a couple of points. Number one, the difference between what he's proposing and something like McDonald's. If you've ever gone through that to get something. By the time you pay your money and drive up to the window, you're ready, you know, pretty much, probably not more than three or four minutes to go through a line if nobody in front of you. This is a totally different time. Fast, the word fast, I wouldn't attribute to this kind of business. Otherwise, we're going to look at the locker room where they make pizzas. You go in and sit down, just, you're going to get it and walk away. I don't see a lot of difference as far as the timing. You're going to sit there, you probably have a whole beer before, before your pizza's ready. Um, so I can see you're going to order a pizza and you're going to drive down, you're going to pick it up. So I, I don't see it as fast food, so to speak, drive through. It's just a pickup window.
Yep.
It's like, what's the difference between that and when they walk in and they get out of their car? And as the gentleman explained, there's no queuing of cars. You're just going to get it and go. Um, and also if this, if it was your special permit in the work hearing was to reestablish the fact that they can have a, a window. I would think once you grant that step, establish that they have the right to do that. I would think that's all they need. I don't know why they have to come back for anything else. We want to establish a site plan, excuse me, site, but not a second special permit because it's already established. You're gonna either establish it or not, even if you don't do it tonight, if you want to continue it for a site plan and do what all it wants. But the issue is, at least the gentleman would know whether he's heading down the right road. I'm sure that's why you want to stake the money on the site. Um, but I don't see why you would need to have a second. What would the second special permit say?
Um, because it is altering.
Either not altering anything.
So they end up aside, everything will be altered.
Well, that's a site plan issue.
Right. But it's also, if, if you're doing any of that, um, altering your construction. Besides the nonconforming use.
But if not a nonconforming use, if you establish it tonight, I would think that.
We were all establishing the nonconforming use.
Right. If you do that with a site plan, including all the changes, I would think that that's all you have to do for a while. I, I don't see why he has to come back for a second special permit type of thing. Maybe if he wants to bring, yes, site, site plan has to come in. I get that. But I would think that just the reestablishing of this window.
Yes.
Walk up, drive up to window. Any other change, if he didn't have a window.
It's by right.
There you go. So you're just reestablishing the fact of the window. Not, not of the restaurant and, and any work. I would think that would be more of a construction permit. But anyway, that would be my thoughts on it. So have fun.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think, um, any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to, you know, say that, you know, the. Jim, we closed the whole other building, uh, and we got a company that's, that's willing to come in and, and make a good of the piece of property, uh, with a new business there for town and for the town taxes and for the town people. I mean, anybody in their right mind after COVID sees that if you can go somewhere, you could go and not have to go into the building and get your order and go away with it. That's everybody who wants. That's what everybody told everybody to do. Don't go in the building, stay outside, pick up your order, get your food and go home. Well, that's exactly what he's trying to do. This should ever go down again. There could ever be another COVID. That'd be the greatest thing in the world. He could actually let somebody serve out the window and not have to enter into the building. So this is all he's trying to do. It's not a huge drive through. It's not fast food restaurant. It's not McDonald's. It's a pizzeria. People are calling in ahead of time. They're placing their orders and they're placing a specific order to what they're looking for. And I think it's, you know, I think it's a great purpose for it. Um, the property is there. It's plenty of land. Um, and I think it should be established in, in something like go forward here. So at the end of town could finally start to look like something before it ends up just doing nothing. Because sooner or later, people got to let things go a little bit and they got to let business take business and, and move forward.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, everybody, everybody.
I think we should.
I'm looking for a motion to, uh, reestablish the drive through window. Uh, I'll make that motion. Go move. Is there a second, second? Um, any further discussion?
Peg has her hand up.
No. No, that's okay. I was just going to say there are other places in Lee. That do that. People drive up to the window, they get the food and they leave. I mean, Vivaldi's is one, not the window, but people drive up, get the food and leave. The locker room is one. They have a window. Somebody might drive up and get it. So. Yeah.
I, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to see a site plan and I don't think we have the jurisdiction to approve a special permit tonight without having seen a site plan.
We're not, all, all we're doing is reestablishing that the nonconforming. Drive up window.
Yeah, but to reestablish the nonconforming drive up window requires a special permit under six point one, right?
Right.
Oh, you're saying.
Oh, no.
Plan on.
I got that one too.
What, what are, what is it that we're being asked to do tonight? We, we're being asked to reestablish a nonconforming use under some provision of law, right? So we have some authority under an existing provision of law.
Aren't we asking just to reestablish the drive through window, Peter? Is that?
Yeah, but, but what is, under what authority does this board have jurisdiction to reestablish a drive through window?
Six five. For six.
Six five.
Yep.
It says shall not be reestablished, reestablished except by special permit from the planning board. That's what six five says. And if it's, and if it's a special permit. The procedure for special permits requires there to be a site plan review contemporaneous or preceding the site, the special permit. And we never seen a site. I just don't know what's back there. I don't, I, I see there's no, there's no picture submitted of the window in our packet. I have no idea if it's a three foot wide driveway or a 50 foot wide driveway. I have no idea about any of that.
We do have.
And I never had the benefit of shopping at whatever it was, chicken nuggets or whatever it was in the old days.
Fried chicken is kind of, kind of known. Um, we do have the, sorry, Peter. We do have a rendering of it. Does that help? Do you want to go site plan?
It's not in my, it wasn't in my packet, Buck. There was just the two, two front views in my packet.
Yes.
I guess it wasn't tonight. He's got to come back for a site plan anyhow. Explain the site plan.
You want to blend the two of them together?
I mean, they, they want to do this for the transaction. They're not going to buy it unless they know they can get it.
Are you waiting for your.
Yep.
Get your zoning deals and your building permit before you buy?
Building permit. I need to know that we are going to go use this.
So if you had a special permit tonight, you'd allow a site plan approval, you'd still buy it? Or you'd wait till, you've still got another process to go through, you have a site plan approval?
Right, but knowing that I can have it. Is it not a good idea? Worst case scenario is allowed by right, that the, the restaurant.
The restaurant partners, yes.
So I, I would be willing to take that gamble. I'd like to.
It's actually in our email packet, Peter, is renderings of it.
There's a, I have two, two photographs, one from the street corner. Looking at all the doors and windows and then one from the rear. Looking at the same long side of the building and that's all I have. I have nothing on the east side of the building.
First one shows the, the drive through. The drive up, the first. There's three.
There are not three. There are two. I have two. Hold it up for the camera. Let me take a look. Yeah. I, I mean, so that I can see it. I, I, you know how small it is on your screen?
This is the first one that you don't see.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. And what, what is the width back there? What is the, the lot width or the driveway width?
Driveway plus parking.
Say again?
Driveway plus parking on the side.
So it's like 25 feet or so to the boundary roughly?
All of it, yep.
Okay, all right. I won't vote no.
Okay.
And the second, right?
First and a second. Um, any further discussion? Okay. That's further discussion.
All right. Well, first of all, having lived on West Center Street for many years and was part of being across the street and moving Kentucky Fried Chicken. There was never a problem with that window being there for people. You just go around. No problem whatsoever. There's other places in town that are much more restricted than that and you gave them a permit. I don't see what the big deal is about this because there's plenty of them. I've seen it for many, many years. The other thing in terms of preparing was also part of Lou's Pizza House. My brother had it. We were across the street. And I know what you have to do to prepare pizza and it's not, you don't buy a frozen. What is?
Crust.
Crust, thank you. All right. You get the big, you pound it and you do everything. You rise it. You have to bake it and you make the sauce and it's not a fast food thing. It takes hours to prepare that. So. I just wanted to say, please, we need business in our town. Let's go ahead and have that. Thank you.
Any further discussions?
On the round, the motion is to reestablish the roof zone only as a special permit.
Yes.
And still could be subject to a site plan approval.
Correct.
That maybe next thing.
Yep, before building permits allowed.
It's a minor site plan approval, not a major site plan approval.
Yep. Then I'll tell you, first off, your sign right there, not going to fly. It's, that's a roof sign, so. Okay, um, so we have a motion, second, further discussion going around the room, Conrad.
Hi.
Dave. Hi, Peg.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi. Reestablished. Congratulations. Okay.
Was that a site plan? Point of order, yeah. Point of order, should you tell him, you get money agenda for the meeting so he's not held up. Uh, as far as a site plan.
Yes, and this can be, um. Appeal, but I'm pretty sure you know that.
The restaurants is allowed by right. It would be no issue.
Yeah.
Restaurants, yeah, the restaurants.
What could be appealed is the.
Drive through. Right. And, and also likely when you see your site plan, we're going to put a restriction on that, that there won't be an intercom or anything like that.
Okay, do you have any engineering issues?
Um, not locally, so there's recommendations, not locally, that'd probably be better.
Oh, you got, you got.
I have.
You don't?
I have some.
When you establish ready, they want that.
The 11.
Have your engineer, what do you use like that regulations for?
Yeah. For a minor. It'll be a minor.
It's parking, building placement stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next up is, I will close that special permit hearing. And that will open up a public hearing, um, or a couple of minutes late on the marijuana bylaw requested by the select board. Um, is there anyone from the select board want to present this? Don't jump a wall of course.
Yes, I'll do it.
Hey, Cory.
Gordon Bailey.
I would say that's the last one you get.
Good job. Well, anyway, uh, Gordon Bailey, I'm going to instigate this because of the problem that we're having down on 102 and smell. Anyway, um. And I am really happy to work with this board to, um, because perhaps I've been told it's been your Conan and you should cut it way back to only what we have now. So I'm more than happy to, and I think our, our board would be happy in the long run to be able to have a discussion with you. Now that you've opened your public hearing, maybe we can continue it. Um, I've actually written up some ideas here that I'd love to be able to present to you. Um. Uh, at some point, what it basically does is allows quite a few different kinds of marijuana establishments, the MBEs. But basically it definitely cuts out all outdoor growing, basically outdoor growing. I mean, every town I've ever heard that has outdoor growing, as you know, probably read about it, I must stock it there. And Sheffield and many other, everybody has a problem with that. Um, because of the, not just the odor, but mainly the odor and the containment of the odor. You can't.
There's no way.
There you can't. So the outdoor, I think, uh, I, I have some suggestions in here and I promote some language where I struck out some language and I've suggested some. Possible amendments. I, I'm sorry that I didn't have a chance. I just got this this morning and I apologize for not having done sooner, but I just, uh. My, I haven't, hasn't worked out for me to be able to do this. I was out of state for a while and just other things have come up. Um, but I would love to, uh, cause most anything that requires. Um, growing, cultivating, I, I would suggest that we don't allow in other zones, in, in any zone. So the marijuana cultivation, I mean, I'm looking at what I wrote up and I'd be happy to leave this, but I, I'd like to write it up for you so you can see it.
Um, so what?
It might be independent testing laboratories would be allowed, um, transportation would be allowed.
But no cultivation at all?
No cultivation inside is what I would suggest.
Outside or inside?
Outside or inside, but especially not outside. And it's really. Because when we first did this, it sounded great because the, the state cannabis control commission. Had very strict rules about what could happen, what couldn't happen and about tax money coming back to the town. But, um, they recently changed all the rules. They have new leadership. Everything changed. We can't have a host agreement. We can't have a host agreement anymore that means anything, not just for money, but for anything. Can't have a host agreement. The state will decide what a bad odor is, not the community, not the neighborhood.
I can read that in that.
Yeah, well, we can launch some other discussions.
PowerPoint, uh, you know, that was set to, I didn't.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't unduly, um, regulate.
Restrict, I understand.
Yeah, but we can still have environmental standards.
But who measures the environmental standard? In other words, the cannabis commission has a group that will come out and do that. It won't be up to our zoning enforcement agent? It won't be up to us?
I, I didn't read any of that.
Um, that's why I've been reading the paper about other towns who are complaining. Because the cannabis control basically said, we'll send out a team that will measure that, and they will determine whether it's a bad odor, or if it's too much.
Outdoor, a hundred percent, you missed, you missed that.
Yeah.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
Indoor, well, they claim they, there's still facilities that are operating without emissions.
And that's what I, I at least will bring to this table, hopefully you can continue this for further discussion. And we have time to do that, before the town meeting and any final adjustments. Um, is how do you leverage that? You know, uh, you know, working with the people on one oh two, they said, oh yeah, yeah, no, we'll do it. It was over a year, they didn't do anything.
Well, we haven't, they, they.
We can't leverage it according to the cannabis commission.
Well, did we try?
I tried, I thought you.
It's not our bylaw.
We, we met with, um, uh, town administrator and I both sat here in a Zoom meeting with Harsh Patel, your honor, to, he would have a group in there, so he'd fix that smelling. Nothing, that was over four months ago. Nothing has happened.
In our bylaw, if they do not remedy a problem within thirty days, they cease operation.
Well, here's the issue.
Did we try that?
The kid, no, and, and again.
To that, Gordon.
Yeah, okay, yeah, cause the cannabis commission will overrule that.
And let them.
And I get that, but what good does it do us, cause they're not gonna stop operating? They're gonna appeal it, and they're gonna keep going.
I, I think we got, we have the bylaw in place.
Right.
No, I, I am in agreement, the outdoor, yes, we gotta have, I, I don't, that's. Not there, no.
Well, town administrator would like to speak to that issue of the cannabis commission. What they overriding in town right now, what they're doing to host agreements, so I'll turn it over to him.
But if there's host agreements, and they're approved by the AP.
That doesn't matter, they overrule, a state, state regulation supersedes local regulations.
It does, we know that.
And they've been, I, I know you, and it's the cannabis commission's regulations that we have to worry about. And, and the fact that they are the authority, so I'm gonna turn it over to the town administrator. And if you would be willing, after these things, to continue this, I'll bring back a written proposal, that at least we can start having a discussion on. You voted down, you voted yes? Cause remember, we're asking you to do something.
We wanna spend it at the town meeting.
Right, e- exactly, and so what we wanna do though, is amending some language in here, such as getting rid of the, the outdoor cannabis growing. But I'm willing to write up something to give to you prior to your meeting, so you'll have time to digest it. Um, and then.
Did you rewrite our bylaw, or is it just?
No. Yeah. No, I, I made notes that I wanted to highlight and write and make suggestions for you to bat about, and say, is that the language that we should put in front of town? Because the townspeople may say, no, let it go the way it is, they may not wanna change any. And I'm suggesting going fourteen down to maybe eight instead of, because of allowing other types of.
What if we just, what if we just restrict it on the cultivation act?
I mean, that's, that's what I was trying to do.
And then let, and then let the rest of the business just go.
That's what I proposed, strictly the cultivation issues. But anyway, I'm just suggesting if you'd be willing to listen to the town administrator, and then continue this for two weeks, so I can get your documentation, within less than a week, I'll get it back to you.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask Selectman Bailey a question now or later?
Go ahead and ask Peter.
Okay, thanks. Hi Gordon, um, I, I have a couple of things I wanna ask you about, Gordon. The, the host community agreements, I, I'm not, I haven't seen what they did to them. I know that we had agreements with both the retailers and with the one organization that's growing in town. And, well, the one on Route one oh two, did we have a, a host community agreement with the one that's up on Route, uh, twenty also, up by the lake?
Yeah, we have agreements with all of them.
Okay.
We, we.
So they've cut out, they've cut our legs out from under us, under that, those agreements. We, we can't, we, all we can get is what they'll give us, I assume, right? Is it how much they feel like handing over? But we, if they wanna give us nothing, we can't demand anything, is that pretty much it?
I'm gonna have the town administrator also, cause he and I both listened to it, and he did some further.
Okay, okay.
You're both at the same, I'll stay here just in case.
Okay, thanks, thanks. Hi Chris.
Okay, so as Gordon mentioned, we were both on a, uh, a meeting with, uh, legal representation from the Mass Municipal Association, and we've done research with our own counsel as well. But, um, actually, the lawyer that we were with specialized in this, is essentially, new regulations, the HDA, it's very complicated, but, well, all HDAs are now gonna be rereviewed by the cannabis control commission, so regardless of what we have, on paper right now, the, the CCC is gonna come back and, and basically go through it, say, no, this is no good, that's no good, you gotta take this out, you gotta take that out. Um, and it goes as far as to say that if, if we don't like it, it, we have no recourse. If we don't like what the CCC does, we have no appeal authority over it. However, if the marijuana establishment doesn't like, they can appeal, and they have appeal power, but we don't. I mean, it's gone that far in the other direction. Um, so essentially, in meeting with our, the, the municipal agent from CCC as well about odor issues, it's even, first of all, you, you may eventually be able to, um, what they would consider discontinue relations with, as a town with the marijuana establishment, but the, the CCC does not wanna see those fail, so they would probably let them regulate or, like, directly under the state, even if the town didn't want anything to do. They would, they would reestablish them under the CCC instead of the town of Lee. And they have that, um, you know, they, they, they have certain authorities with this new legislation to do that.
So they can, they can just bypass our, our bylaw if they wish? And just, just authorize a marijuana establishment in Lee without any reference to our bylaw, is, is that what you're saying?
Continue relations with the marijuana establishment. The, they would, they would probably take over for us on, um, with that community agreement. But there's a little more with, specifically with the bylaw. So first of all, our bylaw, the, the first issue is that our bylaw is considered to regulate them more than other, than any other business. And that's, that's like the first test the CCC is looking at. So our odor bylaw says that we shall show be no emissions of toxic or noxious matter, which, if the definition of that, be pretty tough to call marijuana odor toxic or noxious. Uh, so right there, we're holding them to a different standard.
Chris, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt, Chris, but I, I think, based upon what I was hearing all last summer, a large number of people down on one oh two consider those odors noxious.
Definition they're going with for noxious is harmful or poisonous. I don't think they're either harmful or poisonous odors, so that would be the first thing we'd have to get out, get through.
Actually, it doesn't say that, Chris.
That's our regular zone.
No, no.
Under, uh, one ninety-nine twelve point six.
Control of emissions?
Uh, noxious or noxic, noxious matter.
Right, that's in our regular one, but in our, our marijuana one, key, E subpart, seven, says control of emissions, sufficient measures and means of preventing smoke, odors, gray dust, fluids, and other substances from exiting an ME must be provided at all times.
Right, no, that's exactly what I'm, you're, you're, that's my point though, is that that's just saying they can't have any odor. As the CCC is saying, it's around one house, they can have an odor, um, as long as it's not toxic, no one else.
So if nobody's, if nobody's keeling over, they get to do it, no matter how bad it smells. You have to get sick.
Prohibits toxic or noxious odors from everyone else except marijuana, which we prohibit odors of any kind, whether you deem it. You know, it doesn't matter if it's toxic, if you smell something, it's, do you see what I'm saying?
I do, I get you now.
So that's the first thing that they were gonna. So, that's another way to change it, too. Um, now whether, um, but that, just, you know, whatever that will do to everyone else in town.
Well, I mean, we, we did, we had Leela.
Yeah.
Their, their pelletizer had an issue a few years ago.
Yeah.
It was awful, and we approached them, and, um, they remedied it.
Yeah.
They didn't wanna be shut down, so. So there, it'd be no different.
Well, all I'm saying is, under with the current situation, the CCC is gonna look at that as if we're placing, um, more restrictions on them than any other business, that's the first thing. Whether, you know, we, again, we can fight that, um, but the other situation is they, before they even send an inspector out, which would be the next step, if, they wanna see us work with the companies, which we have, and we're, and Sean, I'm sure can attest to that, we've been, we've been working on those orders. It, there's, I don't, there's very few places that have actually eliminated these. And the, the bylaw is this measures to prevent odors. Um, so the, the CCC is basically saying, like, you, you can't just shut them down. We can send an inspector out, they'll take the next step, and, and, but shouldn't just say, oh, you got thirty, shut you down. I've been told the state's not gonna let that fly. So that's. I, it was not as simple as we might make it, think, think it might be sometimes, in, you know, these places.
Chris, what's your solution?
Well, here's the way I look at it, and personally, this isn't a big thing for me personally, I'm not, it's not, you know. You know, I'm not particular. Here's how I look at it, I think we can look at it in a very simple, uh, a very plain, simple manner. The town passed zoning, which we have here, I don't know what it was, five, seven or eight years ago, maybe, maybe less than that. I know I was at the meeting, but we passed zoning, there was a certain expectation from the state. We were gonna get HDA money, we were gonna be, have these, uh, agreements in place, there was gonna be all these things. And then the state came and changed all the rules on this. So the way I look at it right now is, the rules have changed. This is just a matter, we wanna bring a new proposal back to the people of Lee and say, we're not gonna get this money anymore that we were promised, we're not gonna have these HDAs that we were promised. Do you still wanna keep it this way, or should we restrict the number? And that's how I look at it, if, if the rules stayed the same, I don't think we'd be here. But since they changed, is it, are we at a point now where we should maybe at least say to the people of Lee, look, we have these issues, the rules changed, you want us to limit it, and if they put one, you know, if, if, if the town votes, no, we don't wanna change it, and we have an odor problem in another part of town, we've at least said, well, we, we, we brought it up.
To.
To see if you wanted to change it, so, um, I guess I'll leave it with that, unless there's specific questions, but.
Gordon, I, I have one thing. Sure, what are we gonna fix by reducing the number? I can see outside home, but we got a problem, and we, we're not getting any closer to solving that problem, you know more about it than anybody.
You, you probably have, uh, if you restrict, um, growing, cultivating, then you eliminate the only drawback that I've seen throughout talking to anybody across the state. They've never had a problem with.
What's it gonna do with that problem down there that we can't?
That one, we probably will, we're, I mean, they're getting seventy-four thousand dollars, giving that to them to adjust their HVAC system. And I'm hoping, and they said that they hired someone to look at that, upgrade the HVAC system, so that they'd be able to take care of the odor issue. Um, so we're waiting to see, but it doesn't really fix that. What I, what my intention was, was to save the rest of the areas of the town, all the other zones, and not have to go through, uh, the Route one oh two resident, and not, it's High, Highfield Drive. It's Fox Run, it's the apartments on one oh two around the corner from me, it's Soul Fitness. It's, there's many businesses along there who can, who complain about, oh, what are they doing? You know, um, so it's not just me. I'm here, I mean, I, I've talked to a number of people who live down there, they don't wanna have their names out there. And, you know, I could tell you invisibly, but I, you know, they don't wanna be publicized. But yeah, they're, they're like that with Zen some days. And some days it's perfectly fine.
Well, it's basically.
Across ours, yes, it's when they harvest, and right now, the problem was, cause I went through the place. And to tell you the truth, within the grow rooms themselves, there is no atmosphere that escapes. The problem was when they, um, and it would be with any cultivator anymore. It's when they move the product into the hallways to dry, to be able to go to another room. The HVAC system is bringing fresh air in and getting rid of air for their employees, to make their employees healthy, is ejecting all this odor out of the corridors. It's not the grow room itself, uh, is what I notice. And, um, there are other issues about some of the rooms that they have. Even in their main drying room, it wasn't as stinky as it was when it's non-dried and out in the hall. Once it's dried up, you're really, that's not the odor problem. It's when it's wet, then harvested, and it's hanging in the hallways. That's it, you know, I mean, we can call OSHA, because they're really contaminating the employees. And we, they already had one death in a marijuana cultivation place, because she had, the lady had such a severe asthma attack because of the product in the air, and she died. And after that, we didn't smell anything for about three weeks. I don't know what happened, but we didn't smell anything. Uh, so I don't know if they stopped, I don't know what it is, maybe it was accidental, but it was very good, you know? And I have to say, for the last couple of days, it's been okay. Um, but again, it goes through cycles, where all of a sudden, you're three to four weeks in a row, where it's just, all the neighbors call me, cause they know that I'm here to talk to you guys about it, so, anyway. That's all I can say.
The way it is now, we just have our two retail, and then the rest are non-retail.
Sorry, bro.
Uh, so I believe theoretically, we could have eleven more growth this year.
Yes, we could, yeah, by special permit.
It's like, so how, what's your number you're thinking for cultivation?
Well, none, I was saying none for cultivation, I was saying eight, eight total, yeah. Well, there's a number of different, we have definitions, if you look at one ninety-nine eleven, B definitions. I'm saying, like, you have a definition for craft marijuana cooperative, well, that has to do with cultivating. Um, and I would just say, at the very end of that, just add, I'm not allowed. You know, and then under, um, independent testing, no problem. Even if it means very minor occasional, you know, cause laboratory testing is gonna be controlled totally differently than cultivation, in production. Um, marijuana cultivation facilities and marijuana cultivator, we have a definition, and then afterwards to say, no. No, this is, this is just a brief overview of our schedule. Um, marijuana establishment, um, remove the first three units, which, uh, that's the next page top. Marijuana cultivation, and then back to the cooperative and, and the manufacturer. Basically, it would allow for the manufacturer, retail, independent testing labs, marijuana research facilities, marijuana transporters, and say, yeah, all those are good, anybody wants to do those businesses? I, I think that would be great for our town. I mean, in the districts where, cause then later, districts, well, let's allow them in what district.
Right. Now, our, our pitfall might here might be, our town voted for it.
Yeah, exactly.
And when we, when we wrote this, it was, we could not unduly regulate. So now you're crossing out.
Well.
An entire section of, of.
Right.
The permitted licenses.
Well, we are, well, it doesn't say we have to allow marijuana establishment.
Yes, it does, it did.
Our town voted to allow.
And, and.
Right.
And we need, right.
So I think we have to get a legal opinion about, can you pick and choose which types? I, I don't know this, this is just a layman's.
Well, I mean, I think we'd be saying we're limited to, to.
Well, it, it's possible to, to do that, or is that, you know, we, we can check.
They, they did have a number.
Right, and that was based on twenty percent of our licenses, uh, for takeout with your license.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we should up that to thirty percent, because we're getting zero back, other than, um, the employees are all out of state plates, mostly anyway down there.
Or, I mean, we're still, we're serving what any business would get.
Any business, that's correct.
Right.
Well, hotels and restaurants would get way more if we were to, so I was gonna suggest down the road, I have a lot of ideas, is that, you know, the IU groups with, um, uh, Grellach Mill and Columbia and all that, maybe we should put them all under the A-Rod, if they're not under there now. uh, Greilock Mill and Columbia and all that, maybe we should put them all under the A-Rod, if they're not under there now, still allow totally different kind of flexible development. So we could do more, because residential's not allowed, and I, I don't know if they're already incorporated in A-Rod.
There are over ten thousand square feet of rebuilding.
Oh, yeah, kind of, they have, they have multiple, I mean, that's so much, so they meet that criteria, but what it allows is the developers up there, some of whom were thinking about marijuana cultivation. But it opens a whole area that isn't available to them right now, like residential apartments and whatnot. Um, it just, it allows, because we're not getting industry back, you know, Clarkson will come back, Schwartz will, they're not coming out. So we have to think about what to do with that property, so it's a bigger question, the way I look at it, but I don't want to get it tangled up too much with this.
Yeah.
Uh, that's all.
I think you've seen them not sell because the, the industry is leveling out.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent.
So.
Well, the ones that did get their licenses have let them last because.
Yeah, nobody.
But they, they're just getting overwhelmed in New York, Connecticut, everybody's got.
Look at, um, Birmingham, that's, that is not.
I didn't see a whole lot of cars.
Not a whole lot of action up there.
But we'll see. But at least if another, if another residential or another retailer comes in and now goes out, at least you do get some revenue. The cultivators now, we get no money back because they say, well, if they're not impact, because.
So we get no impact.
Yeah, it, there's no impacts, so we don't get any impact, which is why we have.
What they've done is they, they've taken away the extortion money.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
You want, come on, you want to do business in our town, you're going to pay us, it's extortion, come on.
Because, because, you know, I mean, federally, it's still illegal, you know, Massachusetts and the forty other states have gone there.
Right, right.
And made it not a state problem, while there's still federal laws in all those countries. But now, you know, I mean, I read too much, because the feds are thinking about decriminalizing, changing it from a one to a three or something, or anything, I don't know about that.
The next administration might do something else.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah, who knows? But if you would, if you could just humor me on, on, we're writing, giving you some proposals, I've looked at.
I think that'd be great, get us to a.
I will get it to you in a week, so that you have a week to digest and, and all that, and anybody is always free to call me independently, obviously not together. Peter, you look anxious, you want to jump in?
Yes.
You're like a dog on a bone, go.
Good job, Gordon, Gordon, the question is for you.
Yeah, go away.
Gordon, if I am, if I am a neighbor.
Yeah.
And I, um, bring a lawsuit for nuisance against a marijuana grower. And the argument is that it smells so bad at certain times of the year, that it's impairing the value of my property and my quiet enjoyment of my property. Is that a losing case?
I, I don't know, who?
The smell, if the smell is as bad as what I've heard people say, it's not a losing case, it's a winning case.
Right, and I think, um, I haven't done the research on the court, the court issues yet, I know that, um, there are some in the pipeline, we'll have to see what's.
Well, I'm not, I'm not advocating for private lawsuits, I'm just trying to construe the language that Chris read to me in one ninety-nine dash twelve point six, at the end of which it says harmful to destroy life or impair health, or capable of causing injury to the well-being of persons or damage to property. And based on what I think I've heard people say, I, I, listen, I drove down there a couple of times, I smelled nothing, so I must have been there on the wrong day. But what I've heard people say is that it is just horrible, strong, skunk smell, and then it goes on for days at a time. And if that's the case, why, why can we not meet the standard in our general bylaw on toxic or noxious matter and odors? Why is it a loser for us to try that?
Well, I would say what we have to do is get the town's attorneys, if any, he's one of the defendants, so we have to discuss that, the zoning enforcement officer would have to discuss that language with our town attorney to see if it's a win or if it's a lose right out the gate, let's see what he.
I know, but let's have that discussion, hey, I mean.
I, I'm good with that.
Okay, okay.
And I will be calling you the next time that it's, uh, like, really gross.
Take it, right, yes.
Yeah, so you can come on down.
Call me and I'll come down, but meantime, I, I just want to say that the idea that, I had the idea that it's the selectmen that decide the town's policy on enforcement of the bylaws, not the officials that they hire.
No, 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 there, there was a, I can tell you this, there was a court case about that, uh, a building official got fired for not doing what the selectman told him to do, and the selectman lost, they had to plan all his timeline, because it's, and it's clear in the, in the laws that they are independent um, deciders on issues of building code and zoning code if they're the zoning enforcement agents. They're independent, they are not told what, as their saying goes, we can hire them, we can fire them, but we can't tell them what to do or how to do their jobs.
All right, all right, but have we, has he made a determination? You're talking about the zoning enforcement officer now, not the town council, I assume, right?
Probably both, but anyway, yeah, I'm saying we got.
Well, we can't, we can't tell town council what to do, that's a new one for me, I've never heard anything like that in my life. You can't tell your mayor what your strategy is?
Of course you do, and that's why I wasn't talking about him, I was talking about, we can't tell the zoning enforcement officer what's standard.
Okay, so, I suggest to you is, the next time we start getting a flood of phone calls, rather than us, you know, grumbling about the intermeanings of our bylaws and the phraseology used, that we go to the zoning enforcement officer and say, hey, I think this is a violation, will you make a determination? And then he makes his determination.
I agree.
Okay, all right, I would feel much better about this whole project if we had been through that step already, because it seems to me that a lot of the motive here is responding to a horse that just got out of the corral. Thank you.
Well, we don't want two, three, four more horses out there in the field.
No, no, I, I, I hear you, if you can't control the odor, contrary to what we were told when these places went in, they told us they could, they could control it. Well, if you can't do that, then I, I think your, the approach makes sense, I just don't think it solves the immediate problem in your neighborhood.
Well, I will get back to you on that, as well as some suggested, uh, changes for you to consider.
Thanks.
And then, uh, council, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Do you want to get in touch with them, see if we wouldn't have any legal?
I, I will do that and come back and report to you if you'd like, but, because I'm going to run some of my news by him anyway before I bring him back to you. No use me bringing you something that's just coldly dead on arrival.
Right.
You know, the AG's office.
So we'll put, uh, we will now continue this public hearing until our next meeting. Sounds good?
What time, you have to be a time server.
Uh-huh, time you want.
You tell me, you're to your board.
Six fifteen?
I'll be here. If that's, yeah, because it's got to be a day.
Wait, hold on a second, we'll, we'll have, we're going to have Domino's come in.
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five again?
One.
On March eleven.
March eleven, yeah.
Your goodness is you don't have to pay for a new posting.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your attention.
You will have, you'll get us.
Yeah.
Some of that, and I.
I will get it.
I think it would be risky with the AG, go to zero.
Uh, yeah, that's not the intention, we go, well, we'll see.
Uh, outdoor possibly, but I think, I think if they still believe and they say that where they can control the odor, which we see they can't, so.
I'll stay a couple of weeks and I'll get you something later.
Thank you.
I really think this whole thing is to make this legalized, so all these profits that are all cash transactions, you can attach a little.
Oh, heck, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, hard to follow the money.
Can't tax the dealer very easily.
Okay, um, we have gone through this agenda, so. Hey, hey, are you still here?
I am, I am, hi.
I know it's been a rough couple of weeks for you, uh, you have Community Preservation Act on the agenda.
I, I do, I, there is no report until they meet again, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Very, you, uh, our thoughts are with you, okay?
Oh, thank you, and thank everybody, thank you.
Uh, one more motion, do it, John, don't move.
All right.